Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded December 21st, 2021.
It's after five. We'll follow the Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. Clerk will call the roll.
We have twenty supervisors attending in person, two remote, two excused supervisors, Hahnle and Moore, and one vacant.
Pledge to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Robbie.
Please sit down.
Thank you. And props.
Well, like you, I was very, very disappointed over the last couple of years. I was really disappointed over the last couple of years that we haven't had our annual holiday Christmas party for the supervisors. And unlike the rest of you, I actually decided to do something about it. In this past weekend, when I was in North Pole, talking to Santa, I started telling him about, you know, the people who serve our county and what great people they were and how disappointed we all were and upset how some people were while not having our party. He said to me, Denny, he says, that's what he called me since I was a child, he said, "Denny," he said, "don't worry about it." He said, "I've got it covered." Everybody on the County Board of Supervisors in Portage County is going to be on the good boy and girl list. I was like, "Wow, that's incredible." I said, "Are you telling me Stan's on the list?" He said, "Yeah, he says Stan's on the list." I said, "Is Vinny on the list? He's a communist." He said, "Yeah, he's on the list." I said, "How about Barry? Is Barry on the list?" "Yeah." I said, "Santa, I gotta ask him." I said, "Are you sure about this?" I said, "Is Scott on the list?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "Scott's on the list too." So that was really good news, but I had to ask Santa, I said, "Santa, how come we're not on the list?" He said, "Well, give me the reasons." He said, "The first reason is," he says, "because you're all there." Well, Santa doesn't really say a whole lot besides "whole, whole, whole." So I had to think about him, and I guess he was right. All of you show up, you come in here, you go to the meetings, you deliberate, you do your job, and you do the very, very best that you can. Hundred years, that hasn't always been an easy job to either work for the public or to serve the public. And I think in the last two or three or four or five, six years, it's become much more difficult for all of us in terms of our position. But I think we're very fortunate to have people in our community who come here, who make tough decisions, who take the blows from the people on the outside or the inside, and you do your job, and I think that speaks volumes. And for that, I thank you. The second reason, he said, is that how polite you are to each other. He said, "There was a time about three or four months ago when collectively our names were closer to the naughty list than the nice list." So he said, "We've really cleaned up our act quite a bit as a group," and I think we have. I think we've done a much better job of allowing each other to speak their opinions, listening to other people's opinions, weighing other people's decisions, opinions, and most importantly, I think we've gotten very good at disagreeing without being disagreeable. And we don't see enough of that at any level of government or society today. And I don't think there's anything more American than speaking your mind, but also allowing other people to speak their mind without ridicule, threats, or nonsense. The third thing is, he said, "We're here for the right reason." I don't pretend to know everybody here, but I have observed enough to believe that each one of you are here because you care about our community and the people who live here. Some people believe that we work for them, and I think we do work for them, but most importantly, we serve others. And some people believe we work for them alone, and that's really the tough part of being a servant, is that we serve everybody. We serve the loud and the meek, we serve the haves and the have-nots, we serve those on the left, those on the right, we serve those who agree with us and those who disagree with us. And I think all of you have done a great job of doing that over the course of time that I've been here. Finally, I think you have a good perspective on things. I'd be disingenuous to say that we don't differ on occasion in our views. I'd be stretching the truth to say that we did have different points of view, and we also lean differently in our political affiliation from time to time. I believe everybody here would agree that our differences that I've just mentioned, they don't define who we are, and they don't define our relationship, because we have much more in common than we have differences. We're neighbors, our children and grandchildren attend the same schools, some of you attend the same churches, we cheer on the same sports team, unless you're a fib. We recognize the same celebrations, we find joy in our collective successes, and most importantly, when we suffer as a people or as an individual, we care for each other. And over the course of just the past four years, we've lost a lot of past supervisors, either who are currently on the board or those who are on the board, and I've seen care, concern, and love and compassion from everybody. And we never talk about what their position was or what their perspective was, we talk about them as people. People are community who are willing to come forward like you and to serve other people. So for all of that, I say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Santa says, "Thank you for your service," and Santa says, "Ho, ho, ho."
Approval of minutes for November 9th, 2021, public hearing. Motion by Maresi, seconded by Dubek. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes for the hearing are approved. Approval of November 9th, 2021, minutes. The motion, motion by Splinter, seconded by Gussel. Corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondents.
Human Resources, 2021 Employee Years of Service Recognition, County Clerk fill-in Housekeeping Memo, and County Clerk fill-in Out-of-County Resolution.
Reports. County Board Supervisor, 2021 Attendance Report. This is something for the first time ever. It was created as a wish out of Executive Ops, and we know there's some training to be done with this as well. We believe that some of the people who take minutes, we need to talk with staff and so on to make sure that they understand the difference between excused and absent. Yes. Excused means you called in and you let them know that you weren't going to be attending. Absent means you did not call in and let anybody know. So these columns may have been inadvertently used by staff incorrectly, we don't know. So this is the first time compiling this, it's a work in progress. So if there's comments or things, please direct them to staff and they will try and make it better. We're talking about creating a memo to send out to the staff as well that take the minutes so that they're aware of this. So going forward, hopefully we can do a better job. So. Any questions on the attendance report, comments? Okay. Presentations. We've got a 2021 Advanced Law Enforcement Risk Training, Law Enforcement Challenge, Dustin Kitzman, third place, presentation by Jody Tersell, Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporate, Senior Risk Management Consultant. And I think there's a little video too we've got, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead with the video.
This is great. This is so great. So what do you think? Tough course?
Yeah.
Would you want to try it tonight?
Yeah.
Stan definitely would, right? Well, I'm Jody Tersell, Wisconsin County Mutual, and I am here in very proud, as Portage County should be once again, because you now have another recipient from the Law Enforcement Challenge winner once again. And so you are also the, have been the host of the Law Enforcement Challenge the past few years. You own your own insurance company, you are one of the fifty-three members of the Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation. We have your liability insurance as well as your workers' compensation. We want to keep them safe when they're doing that, as well as give them the best practices of support possible. And Sheriff Lucas has supported these endeavors, and I'm not going to talk about that too, but we greatly appreciate the fact that he supports the training and the competition. And Detective Dustin Kitzman has done this twice now, not only one in his department to get here, but also succeeded in beating dozens of others throughout the state to get to this point and get this award. So what an honor.
Just a little background about this is Portage County has been hosting this for County Mutual with Alert Advanced Law Enforcement Response Training for quite a few years. In regards to that, County Mutual has given $52,000 to Portage County over the several years, and it's because of our officers that are taking this. Deputy Kitzman, or sorry, Detective, sorry. Detective Kitzman here took third place, which gets $6,000 to Portage County for our range improvements. So it's a really big deal. We have competition every year that have several of our law enforcement officers competing against each other so that we can bring the best and brightest out for this competition. So we want to thank County Mutual for relying on us. Next year, we're actually going to change it up a little bit, we're going to move a little bit further south, but we'll still have our people partaking in it. So we're excited. I congratulate Deputy Kitzman, Detective, in regards to his excellent finish this year, and thank him for our $6,000 that we'll be able to use for our improvement months.
And as you can see, Detective Kitzman had to go up and over that wall twice. That was there in back. The speed mattered, his accuracy in shooting, pulling a body to safety, all of that matters. And when we look at what they do in real life too. So I mean, we thank you for your department as well. I would like to give, well, I think this is the most important one. By the way, it's a little windy out there tonight, so we didn't have to take you away. This is for the department, this is $6,000. So here's the most important one, right? This is the real check.
Ah, there you go.
And we also do give the competitors an award as well. So, and of course, we got to have the plaque in order to put that up on the wall.
Gee, will you take a picture so I can have that for us?
I've got three.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Pataki.
Mr. Chair and fellow supervisors, things that you don't know, what goes into this shoot and what the officers do. We've had two officers, Bob Lanta and Dustin Kitzman, right now, who have brought in that $52,000. But you would not believe what they go through. The training is, not only is it department training, but they train themselves also. And you have to be, not only be a good shot, you have to be physically fit. And what I like to do is just have Dustin Kitzman give you just a brief talk about what he goes through for his training. Dustin?
You can go right on the microphone here so they can hear you. Hello. I'm Detective Kitzman, I've been with the sheriff's office for twelve years. Stan's right, I do devote a lot of my personal time to try and obviously better the county. I've been a pretty much a lifelong resident, I've served overseas, I've been serving here. I love the community, I have very strong ties and opinions about this community, and I'm here to make it better. Some of the things that I've done to prepare for this competition that I've been testing out for, for approximately four or five years, I've had to beat out another gentleman who's won it in the past several different times, is a lot of the physical attributes as far as running and pulling. I'm a big proponent of doing jiu-jitsu, so I have a membership up at a local gym. I also do a lot of shooting on my own time, and if anybody shoots guns, they don't clean themselves. You know, it's not an easy process to load everything up, be safe, good days at the range and bad days at the range, and when you're competing, mentality is a huge aspect in that. So trying to stay positive, and you know, at the same time, everybody wants you to win that money, you know, they want those range improvements, they want better equipment, and now is a time more than ever, you know, in the next ten years. And when I initially got hired, there were several hundred people, you know, vying for a job, and now we're really getting down there. And that's not just in our community, that's statewide. I recently graduated from a Leadership in Police Organizations course, and that was pretty much the sentiment across the state is, it's really hard to find people to do this job. So I appreciate it, I'm here for the community. Thank you.
Number nine, Library Director Othout and County Executive Holman, Portage County Library, fortieth anniversary.
All right, good evening, everybody. As the chair said and as you saw in your packets, we've got a pretty momentous occasion coming up this month and into next where we'll be celebrating forty years as a public library system. It's a tremendous community resource, as you know, it's been playing a big role through the pandemic too in the sense of giving people outlets through digital options and books and whatnot, and even really popular curbside pickup for several months, I would say. But Larry Othout here, he's the Director of the Library System, and you know, we just both wanted to highlight this, we'll be certainly highlighting the proclamation next month as well during that timeframe when there'll be other events and things to kind of draw people's attention to the fact that we have a library system, because not every county does. And there's a lot of wisdom in getting that in place, and you know, there's, believe it or not, there can be politics behind libraries at times. But nevertheless, I'll leave it at that for now, and just, Larry, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Chair, County Supervisors, forty years ago, this body made a decision that continues to benefit the residents of Portage County today. On September 15th, 1981, supervisors voted to form the Portage County Public Library. At the time, libraries in the county were just municipal and village libraries that covered less territory, but that vote that day gave citizens the ability to borrow, learn, read, and enjoy. That vote brought the Portage County Public Library into existence on January 1st, 1982. And that's why you see the proclamation before you tonight to acknowledge that fortieth year anniversary. Today, Portage County is one of only nine consolidated counties in the state. Consolidated means that every resident in the county is covered by library service. Some of the others are nearby, Adams County, also Marathon, some of the others, Brown, Door, Florence, La Crosse, Marinette, Shawna was the most recent addition. Since that time in 1982, the items and services we offer have changed a lot, but one constant has been the growth of the library system in Portage County. With our branches in Almond, Plover, Rochelle, and Stevens Point, after the first full year as a consolidated library, we had 272,000 things that were loaned that year. In the most recent year, last full year, we'll go back to 2019, since the last two have been a little bit different, 478,000. That's a seventy-six percent increase in our circulation. Membership in the South Central Library System, which includes seven counties from here down to Dane County, also have been part of our growth. Each year, we send 100,000 items owned by our libraries to libraries in those other counties for their residents to use. At the same time, we receive almost identical 100,000 items from those counties for our residents. In the coming year, we'll be celebrating our county libraries before and after the consolidation, so I'll leave you with a couple of tidbits. Supervisor Zastro in District 24 is the only supervisor in Portage County with two different library systems within his district, both the Portage County Public Library and the Letty Jensen Library of Amherst. Forty years ago, Amherst elected to remain an independent library and still is today. While we fully cooperate with each other, Amherst is not a part of PCPL. And also for Supervisor Barry Jakowski from District 23, you may enjoy this news clipping from 1933, comes out of the La Crosse paper, and the headline is "Library at Almond Saved From Flames." Apparently, the Almond Library was saved from destruction by fire when it was removed from the danger zone by putting ropes around it, and they drug it away from the fire next door by a tractor. The landmark next door, the Almond Hotel, went up in flames, but the library was saved. So thank you for your time and your support, especially to Supervisors Hahnle and Dubek, who are on our library board. Thank you very much.
Number 10, County Executive Holman's Healthcare Center update.
All right, so we just felt it was important to kind of bring you up to speed on where things have been. It's been a fast and furious fall of meetings and meetings and meetings to get to where we are today. And so the one-page update I have in front of you, and there's copies in the back for anybody if they're interested, just kind of summarizes briefly the things that we've been working on. So throughout the fall, we've had the referendum study and information campaign. Those things have been happening concurrent to one another, but the referendum study portion has really focused on the building side, which is looking at design, concept, costs from, you know, from the roof down to the basement and everything in between to really get an accurate number for what that would be. Currently, the concept budget report is ninety-nine percent complete for that facility and all the associated upgrades. The information campaign, there's core messaging, real important pieces of information that you want the public to know, again, so that everybody's, you know, operating from the same platform when they have whatever thoughts they're going to have about the decision they would make in the election. If the County Board approves a referendum in January, that would launch the next day and carry forward through the election in April. We did conduct an initial public survey and survey of the healthcare center staff to get feedback about what are things that are concerns to people out there. We put it out to, well, approximately 4,000 people and had about 400 people respond, which is a pretty good response rate as surveys go. We also held a public meeting to look at different design ideas, and again, to just get more feedback from the public, like what things do you like, not like, and why, so that as the firm moved forward with their rough drawings, and then we worked with the committee, being able to kind of take some of those things into consideration and so that people could see that reflected in what was before them. In this month and into next, we've got some final meetings and some final steps in the process. I'll just walk through a few of them again, just to kind of give you a global understanding of the things that are all happening behind the scenes to get this done. So we have a lot of great resources in the county already for finance and financial minds, but CLA, who we work with for our annual auditing services, we're engaging them to be a financial advisor, to help put together projections and things like that so that when they work with the healthcare center staff, the number that gets generated out of those formulas will be as accurate as possible so that the number on the referendum question in April, assuming that it is on the ballot, will be able to be a functional umbrella for the foreseeable future and capture whatever happens underneath it so that you're not, you know, finding yourself short of funds, you know, again, should the referendum be approved. The healthcare center leadership is working directly with them, HR and finance on some of those projections. We've already reached out to bond council to kind of give an idea, like, "Give us some numbers, what does it look like? What's the impacts of debt service? What would the mill rate look like?" All important pieces of the conversation that we'll, you know, have, you know, over the next month. Similarly, last time we did a referendum, the statutes were not very kind in terms of the language they had in allowing it to take place. Since then, there's been changes to some of that language, which has helped a lot in getting it done. But we also learned, before this meeting at that time, we were still on the phone with Department of Revenue saying, "Are you sure that's correct?" And it all worked out, but this time, we've reached out to them early and often to kind of vet the framework of the referendum question and the resolution itself, same with the calculations, so that as that work is completed, the numbers can jump into the document and everything will just go smoothly from there. Meetings that I want to put on your radar, the healthcare center committee will be meeting January 5th, they'll be looking at the referendum question, and at that time, like, what's in it? Like, what are the components? Whether that be the building side, which should probably be a hundred percent complete at that point, and the operational sort of calculations and other pieces to the overall financial picture. And then from there, we'll have another meeting on the 11th. That's the last day we have to approve that question by the healthcare center committee so it can get into the packet for you on your meeting on the 18th. But there's also a finance committee meeting on the 17th, which is kind of a fail-safe in my mind, and that if there's some wild hair tweak that needs to be made, and finance is looking at the question and approving the process the day before your meeting, then that can be done at that point, and it's, you know, it's happening through the appropriate channels. Obviously, County Board meeting is on the 18th, that question will be before you for your consideration. After, assuming the County Board did approve it from January 19th through the April election, that information campaign would commence, and as I note there, the intention is not to advocate one way or the other, but to just provide objective information, because people understand the facility, they know the services there are provided very well, it's an excellent service, we have great staff, but some of the mechanics behind what makes it work, or what are some of the structural issues, whether that be from the federal government or the legislature, that's not something that everybody knows intuitively. So kind of educating the public and being able to answer questions even on the fly as that campaign goes forward. The new facility, if you haven't been tracking those meetings, we did have at one point eighty bed licenses over time, along with the census that has dropped down because you have to pay a fee for each one of those bed licenses every month. And so knowing that we were never going to be refilling or, you know, getting up to that same number of residents, it didn't make sense to be paying for licenses we weren't going to use. So we dropped down to forty-eight bed licenses, which still leaves eight beds as a cushion, should there be something down the line in the near term that you could expand into. But the plan right now is to shrink down to more of a forty-bed facility, thirty-two of those beds would be in a skilled nursing environment, and then eight of the beds would be sort of a flexible space for bariatric services, to isolation, to even double capacity, whether, so maybe you had a family that wanted to stay with their family member overnight, or sometimes you have husbands and wives who are in the same situation, so they can be in that same space together. But the idea is to make that space as flexible as possible and complement the other services in the community. The construction will be on the current site, it'll be phased, because the only other option really would be to shut it all down, break down, demolish the building in place, and then build a new. But by phasing it, we will have to draw the census down to around twenty or twenty-two. We're currently around thirty-five or so, give or take, but when we get there, phasing down, we'll be able to move people into one wing, which facilitates all the new construction, and then those folks and services will move back into the new building, and then the project will complete. The cost projections are very comprehensive, as I said, the architectural firms doing a very good job of accounting for everything from soup to nuts. And just lastly, the, I met with healthcare center staff last week to answer questions they had about all this, to update them about where we are and how we got here, with two very good meetings with the shifts that came off at seven and two. So they're all on the same page, and I think everything's moving in the best possible direction, you know, all things considered. And just one last note, the two logos you see on there came out of the conversations around the slogan, which is "Our Health, Our Care, Our Future," but also the logo development is ongoing, but these are the two options that the healthcare center committee liked the most, and so we'll see those get developed a little bit more. But if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to ask, answer them, but again, I just But if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to ask, answer them, but again, I just wanted to kind of give you a brief update, so that you wouldn't be caught by surprise by anything in January.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, Mr. Executive, I was wondering if you could direct, if it's possible, a staff person to make a kind of a one-page information sheet, what this referendum is all about, what the reason for it is, the whole situation, so that we going out and door-knocking for our campaign can present it as basic, this is like basic voter education, right?
Yeah.
I talked to the corporate council office, and he advised me not to step over the line of advocating for the yes vote on the referendum, but rather just to be there in person, or just drop at the door, just basic facts, so that people know, you know, because when I was getting signatures, I said, you know, "Couple things on your radar screen, pay attention to what's happening with the nursing home," and really, a lot of people just were not, it wasn't on the radar screen. So I think that would help all of us be better, you know, just better at representing and getting info out there to people, because, man, people don't know much about the county, I'll tell you.
Yeah, no, they're great points, and it's definitely something that's under development, so I'll make sure after this meeting, I'll talk to Aaron Sorenson, who we're working with on that, to say, "You guys would be interested, at least in the interim, in some sort of one-page, or that we can kind of pull from all the pieces we have right now to give people something to work with," and that will get further developed and be part of that sort of suite of information through different channels that people can either point others to or utilize on their own. So thanks.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time, with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. I think everybody has signed a sheet. And I, we have, oh, I'd say probably a dozen or better, so I just want to remind everybody, it's three minutes to speak. Please be civil and respectful. Also, no personal remarks towards individuals. And I just ask that if somebody else has already stated an item, that you don't repeat it, just say, "I agree with so-and-so," either in favor or against it. And you cannot use your time or pass it on to someone else, so. All right. Confirmation of county executives' appointments and reappointments. If there are no objections, I will take eleven through fifteen as printed. See no objections, motion by Supervisor Ladex, seconded by Supervisor Pataki to approve. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Confirmation of executive operations committees' appointments. If there's no objections, I will take sixteen through nineteen as printed. No objections, I'll take a motion. Motion by Madine, seconded by Rakowski. Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution. Number twenty. Resolution to strongly disagree with the Business Fifty-One Church Street Division's street reconstruction as proposed by the City of Stevens Point on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and to keep the traffic pattern, four lanes for traffic safety.
Resolution number one-seventy-six, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution voices the county board's opposition to the proposed reconstruction of Business Fifty-One.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Eileen?
Eileen.
Eileen.
My name is Eileen Kozlowski, five forty-five Franklin Street. The Stevens Point community has made it crystal clear that we do not want or support the Business Fifty-One road diet. The city council has failed in their obligation to adequately serve their community. Not only does this raise serious concerns, but this is also a safety issue. The road diet will impact the ability of the emergency vehicles to get through. I beseech you to do what is right for your city and your constituents. No road diet.
Fred Kelkoven.
I'll tell you, I'm a little nervous up here. I've never spoke before the county board before, so I'll do my best, and hope to take less than three minutes, but I'll tell you, I was born in this city, I lived here all my life, except the time that I spent in the military on active duty. I really, I love this area, but I'm very concerned about the way the city of Stevens Point is going. They wouldn't listen to us when they're talking about the road street diet over on Stanley Street. This is a disaster. They did it again. Michigan Avenue, now they want to do Church and Division. Enough is enough. Hey, it's time to use some common sense. I've driven a car all my life, and it's just, it's like you've got no rights as a driver. People get on a bicycle, they can do anything they want, go any place they want. It's, it's a, it's a very, very much of a hazard. I just, I was at the city council meeting last night. I like to be proud of the city council, but the number of people on there that listen, I could count on one hand if I cut two fingers off. It's, I'm concerned about things, and not only that, Sheriff's Department, they're doing a good job, city police department's doing a good job, firemen are, but you don't have to make a main street in the city an obstacle course. I'd like to talk longer, but you got the idea of what I want. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Becky Cresson.
The Business Fifty-One project has been going on since two thousand and eighteen, and this is the second go-round that they've tried this. It's really frustrating, and honestly, I think pretty alarming, that because it happens that this particular decision is in the pretty much sole control of eleven particular people, that these eleven people have chosen to push their own agenda, not listen to the community, and not even the needed involvement in the decision-making process of like the sheriff's department, the fire station, the bus garage, and all the small businesses, the people who should have had input in this, because this highly affects, you know, the safety of what they do, or their ability to operate even. This planning process has been going on, like I said, for three years. When I spoke to Northside business owners just yesterday, three years into this, the majority of them had no idea what the impact of this road plan had on their own businesses. I had to sit down on the phone and be like, "You're losing a driveway." They didn't know. These are restaurant businesses with drive-throughs, where you pull in one driveway to either go in the parking lot or around the building for the drive-through, and then you go on the other exit. Most of them are losing one of those driveways. How this, the thing is set up, they can't move the building, they won't be able to operate with one driveway. These are gas stations that currently sit on the corners, and they have three driveway access points, and anybody knows these corner gas stations are hard to maneuver as it is around everything, just because of the small space and how they're set up. Most of them are gone from three driveways to one driveway. If it's hard for us to maneuver right now with cars, can you imagine? How do they expect the delivery trucks and the fuel trucks who make their daily deliveries to be able to maneuver those parking lots with one driveway around the customers and the pumps when this goes through? The gas stations, you know, several of them talked last night, because they have high concerns that they won't be able to operate. And what does this do to the resale value? Can you imagine trying to sell a restaurant or a gas station or whatever it is with only one driveway? What does that do to your ability to sell your business when you need to sell it? There's literally a strip mall with a subway and a pawn shop and stuff down in the south side that loses all their driveways. There's like five businesses there, and they lose all of them. So I know, that's from what I've seen, like, the city doesn't like to get involved in the county, and county doesn't like to be involved in city.
Please wrap it up, Becky.
Yeah. We're here because, you know, even, a lot of you do live in the city, work in the city, and the city's the heart of the county. We, we need you guys to find ways to help us, to get involved, to help these small businesses, to help the safety of the road, to help the sheriff's department, and everybody else, the emergency services that are being affected by this, so we can get a road that will be safe and best for this community.
Brock Matic.
I just support the resolution to strongly disagree with the Business Fifty-One project.
Thank you. Annette? Is that right? Anita.
Anita.
Anita, there you go.
Hi, my name's Anita Jasonson. I actually live in Wisconsin Rapids. I'm a resident of Wood County. I work in Marathon County, and I patronize a lot of businesses in Portage County. For somebody like me, community goes beyond county lines. I have a lot of friends that work in this area, I have a lot of friends that live in this area, and I have friends that live in Marathon County and Wood County that aren't aware of this road diet thing, and the few times I brought it up in a conversation, quote-unquote, it's like, "Are they nuts? What are they thinking?" But, you know, what I was going to say about it kind of follows along the lines of what Becky just said, you know. You know, you look at a two-lane road on a big corridor like that, there's a line of traffic waiting for a stoplight, there's a line of traffic in the middle waiting to turn, there's a line of traffic coming the other way. How the heck is an ambulance or a police car supposed to get through in an emergency? You know, these are very heavily residential areas, there's a lot of businesses, and it's just breaking my heart to see and to hear a lot of the business owners along there, you know, with their concerns, because how much more can they take? You know, this past couple of years has just been horrible on the small business owner, and we're trying to rebuild and trying to unite the community again, and all I see is division, you know, all over a road. I just don't understand it. I just see the road diet as a very bad thing for the community, and like I said before, to me, a community goes beyond county lines. So thank you for your time.
Neil.
Hello, my name is Neil Wasinski, three-nine-six Old Wausau Road, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. But enough about me. Today, I'm here to tell you guys all about my grandfather, Norm Dombrowski, who actually ended up designing and engineering a lot of things in this county, including the Clark Street Bridge, Business Fifty-One, Highway Ten towards Opaaca, the HH Bridge, just to name a few of his projects, and also Red Bridge as well. And when he always did these projects, he always told me, "You always plan these projects for growth, and you plan for the future, and you dream big, and you dream big, and you also plan for safety." And this project was not planned for any of that. So, they did their traffic study through, it was August of twenty-twenty to, I think it was October of twenty-twenty, and it was Business Fifty-One Traffic Study Number One, there was only one. And you hear all the time, the city council keeps assuring us, they're like, "Well, it can handle the traffic." Well, let's be realistic. In COVID, when everybody was staying home and we were shut down, because we were all trying to be safe and trying to, you know, figure out everything and see what happened, I-39 could have took a road diet, no offense, and it would have been fine. But they didn't plan. They literally, the study was useless, it was rushed, it was an invalid study, and they were irresponsible in their planning. If they would have planned, got their data from twenty-nineteen and did their study, it would have held more water, but it was just completely useless, and it was a completely ram-rodded study, and they have not been responsible with it. So, I'm asking you guys today to please go over here and be the adults in the room, and I guess, let's have a reasonable referendum on this. Let's let it, get it figured out, have some reasonable studies, and get this all figured out, right.
Kevin Flatoff.
Thanks, Mr. Haga, county board, for having me. I'm very ill-prepared, most of my comments were used up last night at the city council meeting. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and just share with you, I've done quite a ton of research on this. I own Gold Key Motors on Church Street, thirty-four-hundred, and I've done a lot of research on safety and whatnot, so I'm gonna share with you the safety concerns that I would have with Vision Zero Road Diet. And real quick, Norm Dombrowski was one of my favorites on, God bless him. So, a couple of articles I read, and you can read them on any side, when Vision Zero started in twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, and it was brought over from Austria, and that's where the road diet comes from, the purpose of it, of course, is to reduce traffic down to one lane with the center left-turn lane in most instances. One of the important articles I read was, it studied Toronto, it studied LA, and it studied Austin, Texas, and these three communities had put in some road diets. The, if I'm not mistaken, I left my notes at the office, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't speak much, but my old con professor, C.Y. Allen, would be proud of me now, because I'm getting better every day. So, anyhow, the title of the article, if I'm not mistaken, was "Vision Zero Road Diets Need to Stop Killing People." The study over six years, from twenty-sixteen up until twenty-twenty, shows in these three communities that traffic fatalities had increased thirty-three percent. Now, how does this apply to emergency vehicles? Of course it does. When you're gonna have two lanes and people are dying, emergency vehicles and people are gonna be at risk. So I understand the sheriff's concern with what happened with Stanley Street, the same concern is gonna happen on the Business Fifty-One corridor. For twenty years, daily, I see two or three emergency vehicles going to save somebody's life, going on an emergency call, flying by my business. They are out there to save people's lives. They're driving a speed that is safe but efficient, because they have to get there to make sure these people are gonna see tomorrow. The concern certainly is gonna be with the single lane, that are people gonna pull over to the left or right, or they can stop in the middle? Are these emergency vehicles gonna be able to get there on time? Again, with this, the studies on the Vision Zero, it's studied, the graphs are there, thirty-three percent increase in traffic deaths. When you turn four lanes into two lanes, you add bikes onto the road, bad things are gonna happen. Now, you have a bike on that road, you have a single lane... Now you have a bike on that road, you have a single lane, you have an emergency flying down that road, emergency vehicle flying down that road. There's potential for a fatality there. We need to be careful with this. I appreciate what the county has done, Mr. Sike. Uh, you, you are addressing safety. Safety is very important. So I would consider, I would think that the, the, I'd appreciate it and I hope that the county board considers the motion for safety on this. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Robin Falk.
Hello. I'm Robin Falk. I've been a nurse for fifteen years. Um, I've also worked as an EMT in this community and as a paramedic in other communities. Um, one of the common themes that I've noticed throughout the various places that I've worked is a tendency for administrators and bureaucrats to give lip service to how much they appreciate healthcare workers. They really appreciate emergency service professionals and they especially appreciate first responders. We're hard workers. We're heroes. Heroes work here. We get thanked for our service a lot. Sometimes somebody even comes up to you and says, you know, stay safe out there, usually like at a gas station and that's, that was always my favorite. But are we actually respected? And that seems to be more based on if we're telling you something that you want to hear. Your people most concerned with public safety are telling you that this plan is not safe. It's not a good idea. I've heard quite a few comments over the past few weeks and months from people who say they're concerned with safety. And I'm sure they believe they're concerned with safety. And they say to just trust the engineers that came up with the plan because they're the experts. But if everybody, everything that comes from engineers' calculations is unimpeachable, why do we have to test fly airplanes? You have experts in your field telling you that this is not a safe plan and please respect them. When a community and their government doesn't respect their police firing EMS, the first responders notice this. We just heard in person how it's getting harder and harder to fill positions. And as was also mentioned, this isn't unique to our community, but what would be nice is if the unique thing in our community was that we didn't have problems filling these positions. I hear the ads placed for firefighters on our radio every day. They have a shortage of firefighters. Please send the message that Portage County values the health and safety of all of its citizens, including its first responders. Don't just play lip service and disregard the educated opinions garnered from years of experience in living through difficult and tragic situations. Thank you.
Keith?
Keith Gudrowski. Thank you all. Thank you, Board. Thank you to Scott and Stan and the others on that committee for just bringing this up to the city. Because they have been to these meetings at the city and we kind of get not listened to and I think last night there was a pretty good proposal, put that the middle section, kind of a cluster. I, I don't know what to do there. So that's kind of be, gotta be put on hold and left as four lanes, but as, as four lanes as it is, the two, the north end and the south end. Let's say getting rid of the driveways, funneling people to one spot. People are looking on the road, not being able to get in. The ambulance is there. I'm dying and the ambulance can't get to me and yeah, some people would be happy, but it's serious. It's you, you gotta keep the north and the south ends. We can worry about the middle later. I don't know what to do. You get the bikes off of there. Like I said, I grew up here, rode a bike my whole life. My dad would not let me drive on that street. Wyatt Phillips Isador takes you from the railroad tracks all the way to Maria. Water Street Parallels Church. You're within two blocks of this corridor on a bicycle. Get them right off of that road. I don't know what you do to fix the rest of it from Dixon to the YMCA. But the north and south end gotta be left. I thank you all for please try and suggest to the city to consider holding off on the middle, take care of the business on the north and south end. One of the, one of y'all has actually compared County Highway A and Tomahawk and how well a road diet worked there. Tomahawk is one eighth the size of Stevens Point. I go there for work a lot. Been on that road. I think I've seen, one day I might have saw twenty cars on the whole trip from Highway Fifty One to my location. Like, seriously, you cannot even make that comparison. So thank you for trying to suggest the city does it right. I know you don't control it. But thanks for suggesting, hopefully agree to suggesting them, think about where you're going and this is a long range plan. You do it now. Kevin mentioned before, fifty years at least before you spend a lot of money, do it right. Thank you.
Justin Hess.
Hi, I'm Justin Hess. Uh, I'm a Stevens Point resident. I also work for T-Mark Operations. We currently um, operate two Duncan or Duncan Baskins within Portage County. Um, I'm here to talk about six seventeen North Division Street. Um, with the proposed changes to uh, our driveway and the median that they want to put in to um, or on the road on Division Street, we are anticipating a fifty to sixty percent loss in sales. Uh, we just spent one point two million dollars between us and the owner of the building to renovate that building um, to bring it up to where it is currently right now. Uh, we currently employ over a hundred employees within the county borders. Um, we also operate uh, some other uh, concepts um that we are looking to grow in Portage County. And if we continue to see the loss of sales, we won't be able to bring those businesses into Portage County. So we uh, strongly disagree with the road diet and hope you take that into consideration today. Thank you.
Is that Jackie?
Good evening. I'm Jackie Guthrie, resident of Portage County, but recent transplant from Madison, Wisconsin. I appear today in opposition to the county board's resolution to oppose previously approved Business Fifty One Reconstruction plans in the city of Stevens Point. Yes, you heard me right. Um, the previously approved plan aligns with what I understand to be best practices in achieving the myriad goals of the project, including uh, widening the lanes um, up to federal standards. And creating a slowed down, more vibrant corridor where I look forward to walking and riding my bikes to all of these shops. I recently moved from a community that had road diets and that had um, multi-lane roads and bike lanes in the same place um, with improved safety and where emergency vehicles regularly got through and had excellent response times. I'm confident that this community can do that too. And I know change is challenging, but um, I want to support the board in rejecting the current motion and um, allowing the city to move forward with these progressive plans. Uh, I thank you for your service to our community. I yield back.
Dave? Dave Iden?
Good evening, Dave Iden. Thank you Chairman L. I guess I would start out by strongly urging a support for this resolution. Uh, when law enforcement, sheriff's, police department, emergency services weigh in, I hope you're all listening because that's a great concern and safety should be a primary concern in any undertaking of this type. Uh, it, it appears that people aren't interested in the business owners and the city community. Most unfortunate because uh, they provide jobs, services and uh, and goods that everybody is interested in. We want to support local also. Um, as Keith had mentioned earlier, we had discussed some things that might not be lockstep with uh, the city council in regarding, let's work on some sections of this, which would be easier to, to attend to, for example. Um, the CN overpass at the south side all the way to the south there, that would easily be able to kept four lanes and have a little more ample room to work there also. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I don't believe the city council really is interested in doing anything but what they have in mind. If they're so fearful of, of uh, not getting their way, put it to the referendum. City and the, the citizens of the city, the business owners and the taxpayers should have a say in this, not eleven people. And I'm urging you all to consider that uh, as you move forward with this resolution. This is, uh, it's going to be a very long-term plan. It's going to be very costly in whatever fashion it is. It can be a showcase of our community. But we need to do it right and we need to do it right now because it's going to extend fifty to a hundred years into the city's future. And it will showcase uh, what is either a failure on our part at certain levels or what can be a, a success. Thank you all for your time. And once again, I urge you to look strongly at supporting this resolution.
Christopher Wood. Christopher Wood. See any other room?
Hello, my fellow Americans. I hope everyone's there as well. I just want to start off by saying, oh yeah, Marathon County resident in Sister County. So I want to support a, a referendum for like ninety-nine point nine percent of things, right? Because all the decisions made for our country should really be by the people for the people, no matter what it is. So roads are designed way back when and always have been for man. Ladies, but humans. They've been designed for us to travel how we see fit to the destinations we see fit. I don't know, when along the line, we secretly transitioned all the power of decision-making in our roads that used to be the decision of ours to our governments. And when I decided which could be used and which couldn't be used. I don't know the official date on that transition was made, but secretly over time, there's been little adjustments. Oh, the canal on the bike here, the canal bike here. You can't cross one way, crossing man says you can cross. And so I start to constrict and constrict. What I'm saying is I don't think it's a grabber to constrict four lines down the toll lines into the bike lanes. I bike all the time. It's all I have is a bike, a bike everywhere. And I understand the responsibility that it takes when you bike on any sort of road. The group in South Carolina sidewalks are a luxury. Cars are a luxury. I believe that an artist takes his whole string carriage down the road, but he pays tax dollars for him to ride the bike. Poor Ted's home, oh, you can only use this transportation on a tax paid public use road. Everyone should have responsibility and awareness when they use a public road. It's, it's risk. And talking risks away from people all because it's for their safety. And I think that's a issue. There's actually a quote, if you go to it, way back when, about talking away. Liberty is for safeties, sort of thing, liberty is for securities. So what I would say is, if you don't support the referendum, you're largely already making yourself for imprisonment. Because laws are in our era, in our lives, in our world of the people. This is where we build America for our action. District supervisors need to start more up the constituents on a weekly basis, letting them. The reason why Americans don't want to be involved with politics is because politicians don't want to be involved with Americans. The era of the politician making decisions and then going home and making decisions is over. The era of the politician that are involved in the constituents' lives so it can start to understand and control it and actually start to make progress. That's how it is. That's what I got. Let's get out of the game. I'll start and I can exact right here in Marathon County.
Oh, absolutely. Where should I talk? Cause I can talk like this.
And so I heard it like this.
All right. I do, I do sincerely appreciate your time. I hope you all continue to fight for America. I think you know who you are. Do not sacrifice safeties for liberties. I'm a bicyclist. Let's not take bikes off the road. I think everyone just should have some responsibility. I'm aware, y'all be aware, we're gonna be good. Keep fighting, brothers and sisters.
Tr- uh, Trevor? He's virtual. Trevor? Yep. Speak up a little bit more though. There you go. Yep.
Using Division Street as a student wasn't appealing as it was hard to cross on foot and uninviting. The design of the street told me I should use a car to access everything, even though I lived in the dorms. So how's that good for business? How's that safe? Since those days, I've spent a lot of hours volunteering to get safer streets in the county and more specifically in Stevens Point. For the past three years, I was part of the Business Fifty One Stakeholders Group, attended all the general public meetings. And I have had many discussions with AECOM, city staff, public officials regarding the safety and function of Business Fifty One. I'm very confused by this resolution and I have some questions and notes. Where has the county been on discussing the street design over the last three years? Besides last week's Public Safety Emergency Management Committee meeting, was the roadway designed, discussed on any committee or commission? Why is this on the agenda two months after the city council already approved the four to three safety conversion? AECOM worked closely with EMS and Fire FD to make sure this new design was acceptable. They brought their concerns to AECOM and the city during the public process and plans were adjusted to eventually come up with the final three lane design that was approved in October. Did the sheriff reach out to AECOM or the city EMS Fire Department during this process? And looking at the alternative evaluation on the city's website shows that two segments, south and central, are better for emergency vehicles. With a four to three safety conversion, which is what we're looking at. With the north segment being the same rating. Why wasn't this referenced by the sheriff? In two thousand fourteen, the county board approved a comprehensive planning document called the Portage County Bike Head Plan. It was then approved by the city of Stevens Point in two thousand fifteen. This plan calls for Business Fifty One to get bicycle lanes from North Point south to Post Room. This means that both the county and the city already approved installing bike lanes on Division and Church Street. However, through the very public design process, it was determined early on that bike lanes couldn't even fit within the right of way throughout. Since protecting pedestrians with a terrace, which is the grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk, throughout, that was a bigger priority. Thus, the segment in the south has urban shoulders, not bike lanes. The central segment has no urban shoulders or bike lanes. And the north segment has buffered bike lanes. In this resolution, there's mention of sufficient evidence that Stanley Street has caused significant confusion with the public when encountering emergency vehicles in response. However, there are no references cited and no data provided on how Stanley Street is operating poorly. I haven't seen any data tonight, so I'm really confused about that. Whereas the numbers in the case studies from the Federal Highway Administration tell us that road diets greatly reduce crash rates. My five-year-old son was almost crushed three times on Division crossing near Franklin due to inattentive drivers. How does the county propose to increase the safety with keeping it four lanes? From two thousand fifteen to nineteen, Business Fifty One experienced four hundred twenty-four crashes. How does the county propose to reduce these crash rates? Reversing course on the entire approved Business Fifty One roadway design where one segment may cause the city to lose federal funding to cover up to eighty percent cost of reconstruction. Losing this could put city taxpayers on the hook for forty-one million dollars, which is again the eighty percent
Please wrap it up.
of estimate. Okay, thank you. So is the county willing to pick up this tab if we don't get those Fed grants? In our democracy, we lo- locally elect alders to represent us and make important decisions for the city. Converting, converting Business Fifty One from four to three and for safety and savings was one of these decisions. Thankfully, city council voted nine to one in October and then last night, ten to one to reaffirm this. Thank you so much for your time and happy holidays.
Uh, Philip Jankowski, that's the last one on this item. Philip?
Hello, thank you. Um, I'm Philip Janowski. I live in Town Hall. I am a former county supervisor. And I just disagree with this plan. I think what they did in Plover and Whiting was awesome. It's just too bad that a lot of these homes flipped in the last ten, twelve years that they just couldn't have been bought out where they could have moved them or raised them or whatever and, and made the, the thoroughfare all the way through. It's just too bad that a lot of these homes flipped in the last ten, twelve years that they just couldn't have been bought out where they could have moved them or raised them or whatever and made the thoroughfare all the way through. Wide like it should be, then we wouldn't be here. But one of the other things too is I'm a bicycle rider myself, and it seems like we're getting a lot here for free. And as me being a bicycle rider, me included, we should be paying a recreational fee like you do a boat, ATV, or a snowmobile. If you're sixteen years old or older riding the public way, you gotta pay to play. It's just that simple. The other issue I have with this is um, is um, the EMS and fire department now, I don't know if it's three-lane and people are riding, you know, driving on these roads and the fire department ambulance has to come out. When it was four-lane, you could pull off, you know, they can use both. You know, go right down the center of the road, like right up here on Franklin Street. And I think that's probably gonna possibly impede ambulance runs or or fire runs. That's the unknown. I just wish that, I just wish that they'd reconsider this and keep it four lanes or see if they can come to a compromise and buy six foot out on either side and simply the bikes have to ride on a sidewalk. I I ride the sidewalk. It's not that, it's not that dangerous. Bicyclists have to pay attention just like drivers. Don't no earbuds and mind on the road, just like driving your car. On that note, I end and I wish everybody here in Portage County and Stevens Point area a merry Christmas and a healthy, prosperous twenty-two. Thank you for letting me speak.
That's all of the public comment at this time. Uh, I'll open it up to the board. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me all right?
Oh, yeah.
Now, without being too redundant on what I said last night, um, I will make the same remark that uh, I spoke with Scott Bedouin of the Public Works Department, Stevens Point, uh, yesterday. And I asked him who had prepared the information sheets that appear on the Stevens Point city website, the official website. I asked if these were professional engineers trained in the matters of road building, things like that. And the issue was, these are sheets prepared by the Federal Highway Administration by people who belong to professional transportation operations engineer credential uh, status. So, they're the people that provide these things like this road diet and myths about road diets and whatnot. So, I think um, this resolution from this committee is sort of a blow against intergovernmental cooperation, and I kind of regret that we're doing this. Uh, you know, these road diet concepts didn't come out of like a bunch of hipsters sitting in a, in a coffee shop in Soho, and they're not an urban legend. They've been peer-reviewed by people that are qualified, right? We're not expected to be qualified when we machinist. It's on social security, right? Um, but we have county government, city government, township, village government, and we have budgets. We hire the best people we can find with the best credentials to do the best job they can do. That's why I very rarely second guess what our staff are telling us, uh, because they know their stuff and I don't, okay? So as far as the um, the more era that we're moving into, I do agree we are. And it's the twenty-first century, you know, I mean, even if the folks in the back can unelect every one of us county board members and unelect everybody on the city council, you still have the problem how to drag Stevens Point into the era of uh, the limits to growth. Limits to growth are not political. They're physical, natural resource constraints uh, that the whole global economy is up against right now. So, you know, even if you take over all these seats in the government, you're gonna have to work with qualified people, engineers, experts in their field, and listen to what they're telling you. Thanks for your time.
Next, Supervisor Reese.
Uh, thank you, Chair Higa. I'm a little concerned that we're even taking this resolution up. Um, this, and this is with complete due deference to all the testimony tonight. Um, we're being asked to take a position in the complete absence of evidence as county supervisors. I have never seen the design specs on the road. I've never seen any of the plans. I certainly cannot in good conscience say that I strongly disagree with a plan that I haven't seen. Um, I have taken the initiative. I've read the studies on road diets. I've read the studies on how road diets affect emergency services. I have not found any information that speaks against road diets. I'm not saying I'm a proponent of them. I'm just saying that I'm a little concerned that the county is being asked to take this position in the absence of any due deliberation on what the plan looks like. It's also my understanding, this has already been passed by the city. It's already been forwarded to the Wisconsin DOT. I also understand that as a group, we do not have the authority as supervisors to effect the decision on this. Uh, I'm not taking an opinion on either side of the fence. I'm just saying, why are we deliberating something where we have no authority? Thank you.
Supervisor Splinter, did you have your hand up?
Yep.
Supervisor Splinter, then Supervisor Robbie.
I read through this and uh, again, we don't have any authority over what Stevens Point does. And Stevens Point doesn't have any authority over what we do on our county roads. I think it was brought up primarily on the basis of the Public Protection Committee. It was brought up mainly because of the primary concern of public safety and response times. And the only person in this room that has experienced a high-speed response through heavy traffic is our sheriff in the back here, Mr. Lucas. I was wondering if he could give us just his two cents on what it's like to go through heavy traffic while you're responding to a gunfire shot or whatever else that's creating emergency where you put pedal to the metal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, this was brought up at Public Safety Supervisor Slick asked, especially with the proposition of a building being downtown if I had any concerns in regards to the road diet, and which I do. Um, and and the reason being is, the state law says that vehicle coming from the back, uh, rear, you pull to the right. Well, in a road diet situation, what happens is they stop in the lane of traffic or they pull to the left. Now, if we go in that lane of traffic and they pull over, we're we're at fault. So our officers are taught to pull to the left and go around them. Well, what happens is somebody is turning in the other lane and now you have a problem. Um, I've seen the studies too. On paper, everything looks good. I'm I'm not gonna lie. Everything on paper looks good. But in reality, if you drive in my car with the lights and siren, you'll see a different story. So you also have to realize that, you know, this was brought up for if we're gonna build downtown. And I said I couldn't support a downtown build if this road diet went through. Um, the other thing too is that that's the alternate route for I thirty-nine. So when we have a bad accidents out there, which we have quite a bit, we have to reroute traffic down this road. And with a two-lane road with all the semi-traffic and and traffic that occurs on the interstate, I don't know how that's gonna handle it. So those are things to consider. I understand the city is saying that it's been three years, but nobody ever approached me. This is the first time somebody asked me. Um, first time I think county board has been hearing this because nobody approached the county board in regards to this either. So shame on everybody because everybody should have been more informed. Um, shame on the city for not informing the county, county for not being involved with the city. So, and shame on me for not being more involved, um, hearing about this. But I'm taking the stance now because I think that we'd have a serious problem in regards to rerouting traffic, which is my responsibility um, for the traffic. And when we have outside um, community members coming with semi-traffic coming through down a two-lane road, we're gonna have issues.
Thank you. Supervisor Robbie.
I certainly have some, share some questions and concerns regarding the road diet. However, I would have
Supervisor Robbie, is there a mic near you? I can't see.
Send it to my second chair.
Very good.
Um, I can also have a tough time.
Not quite so close, though.
You let me know when we're good, okay? I also feel that perhaps it'd be more proactive and helpful to actually hear from the city council members as to why they're supporting this and and why they've actually passed it. Uh, as I tried to say earlier, I certainly have some questions and and concerns. Um, but it's it's pretty isolated because I'm I'm certainly not authority on it. But before we strongly disagree, maybe we should actually have them come here and explain it to us. And the third question I have is, it seems like we're coming late to the party because if we strongly disagree upon it, and we all say we strongly disagree upon it, um, isn't it already done? So what have we really achieved other than to say to our counterparts at the city that we um, don't have a high regard for them because we're not even willing to listen to them before we tell them how foolish they've been in their decision-making? When in truthfulness, they probably question some of the things we do, but they haven't set up a resolution to express it for whatever reason.
Supervisor Johnson.
Oh, hello everyone, and boy, happy, happy holidays. Um, this is the second night in a row that I get to do this, and I appreciate hearing from anybody, everyone. Um, and to Mr. Kadraski, you know, even though we disagree, I truly, truly want to make sure that that ambulance gets to you and helps you and save you. Um, we can disagree. I want to make sure you survive. Um, couple of things.
Laughing, Melissa.
Is he? I bet he is. Really, it is sincere, Mr. Kadraski. I would never wish any, any harm on you. So a couple of things. Um, this has actually been studied for longer than two thousand eighteen. In fact, I have a letter in my files from November, um, November seventeenth, I think it is. Yeah, November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, from the South Side Business Association. Um, the city at that time was looking at a four-lane alternative to the Business Fifty-One corridor. I was not in council at that time. I wasn't engaged in public service at the time, but I was aware of what was going on because I do live on Division Street. Um, and at that time, the letter states that the South Side Business Association, they indicated they could not support a four-lane alternative because it would be so destructive to public property. It would gobble up and destroy so many homes, including the one I live in, which I kind of like to stay living here. I really enjoy it. Um, basically, it would take out all the homes from about Dixon Street to Ellis Street on the east side. They'd all be gone. Um, and they also saw it as destructive to the south side because it would remove so many businesses and take up so many parking lots. At the time, that council, which included Alder Slawinski, who brought forward the resolution last night on a referendum, and our current mayor, um, were on council and they listened and they figured that this was too controversial and too challenging. And they decided to kind of kick the can down the road a bit, and they sent the money that was designated for the Business Fifty-One corridor to the Hoover Avenue Grade Separation, which, you know, I rarely use. I don't have it used for, but I'm sure many people do. So the six point, point five million dollars, which former Congressman Dave Obay earmarked for the city of Stevens Point for Business Fifty-One. Um, the council at that time sent that money over to the Hoover Grade Separation. So now we're back in two thousand eighteen. And the administration of our current mayor said, we need to get back at this. Council agreed. We need to solve this problem. It's not getting any better. That corridor is actually sixty to eighty years old. So all, not only the concrete, but also the utilities underneath, whether that sewer and water, um, stormwater, um, it could be fiber optics. All of those are aging along with the um, the concrete. So we asked AECOM, the administration retained AECOM, and some people may say, well, maybe we shouldn't retain AECOM. Maybe it should have been an outside source to look at this. That's kind of a, a different issue. We tasked AECOM with go back to the beginning. So they are the ones who did the, the study back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And you can go back to the city archives and read all the public works um, um, minutes and and a lot of the stuff that we're hearing now is what, what that council heard back then. AECOM took their, their task seriously. They actually evaluated fifteen criteria in traffic configuration. And and it include emergency vehicle response. It include public safety, impact to the environment, cost, uh, impact to historic districts, like fifteen different things. And then in each one of those fifteen things, they created a, an evaluation system, a metric for weighting the, what that, that variable meant to this project. There were at least twelve public information sessions. Um, some of them were held virtually because of course this was the time of COVID. There were some in person before COVID hit. Um, could we have done a better job? I couldn't agree with the sheriff more. When it comes to communication, we can always, always do more. We assume people know things. We get busy in our lives. We assume, we assume, we assume, and of course, we know what that means. Um, so I couldn't agree more. Could we have done a better job? Yes. As a county board, could we have been more engaged? Absolutely. Um, could the county executive and the mayor probably have had more conversations? Maybe. I can't change the past. I learned that a long time ago. I used to be a lot younger, less gray, and um, had less wrinkles. I can't, I can't change the past. I can move forward. So, this was evaluated. We did do our due diligence. And as the mayor said last night, the city of Stevens Point police, fire, and emergency responders are the best in the state. Regardless of road design, we're gonna get to you. So, Mr. Kadraski, we will get to you. We will ensure, do our damnedest that you're gonna survive. So I concur with the mayor on that point. So if we need to do more education on how to use our roadways, I remember taking driver's education. This was back in, I'm gonna say early seventies. I won't say when. And the bypass. Remember the bypass, some of you older folks? That was learning how to, to drive the bypass was part of driver, driver education. Because we didn't have that before. We just had a two-lane highway between here and Wausau, between here and Rapids, between here and Wapaka. Things are much different now. So if we need to do more driver education, absolutely, we need to do that. But here's what the city did. City council took the information that came from administration. So the contract, um, engineers, AECOM, and our experts in staff, we have engineers who on staff. And we took their recommendations, considering those fifteen variables, for what we, they recommended to us as the best option to not only ensure continuity over the next thirty, forty years, but also the best bet for um, funding from the federal um, transportation highway system. Because Business Fifty-One, as we received information from the WISDOT, is on the federal highway system. Even though there was a jurisdictional transfer to, you know, all of those things, it's still considered part of that. So we took that information, we took action, and our action was to ask AECOM and our staff to take the next step, which is thirty percent design. In that thirty percent design, we're already starting to see some changes. Will we see more? Absolutely. Will we see other opportunities to give other, um, give driveway access? Absolutely. But as you can see out on Highway Ten East, one, one driveway, if you're gonna go to Burger King, that same driveway will get you to Harbor Freight and it'll get you to Spectrum. I kind of like that, having, being off the highway and being able to get into those, those. So, that is what has happened. Um, again, could we have communicated better? Absolutely. Um, my staff reminds me all the time, it's one of my shortcomings, that what's in my head sometimes doesn't get shared with them. Can we bring the considerations of the business owners and and try to address those? I would love to see a business improvement district and a strategic vision for the South Side businesses. We can do better. We can always do better. Um, but this level of rhetoric, rhetoric isn't helpful. Um, my colleagues and I on county took the advice of our experts of the administration. We did the research, and this is what we've come up with. We did the research, and this is what we've come up with. That's where we are. So again, I'm not sure what else to say. I'm I'm proud of the work we did. We worked hard, we spent a lot of money, we considered a lot of things, and I don't know how many more things we could have considered. But during the 30% design phase, we will definitely be taking all of these things into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting up with me for so long and talking about this. I I I'm I'm done now. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pataki.
Supervisor Johnson said that the ambulance will get to you, Mr. Kudrowski. However, you know, time is of importance when you're having a heart attack, so they may get to you, but by the time they get to you, you may be brain dead, all right? So important to get the ambulance to you as soon as possible, and by switching from four lane to two lane is going to limit that time. Another thing, I'm, the sheriff is not the only person who who travel at high speeds. I was on the Police Department and Law enforcement for 37 years here, and I can tell you, I remember, and probably some of you do too, when I-39 was Highway 51 and was a two lane road, okay? Do you know how many fatalities we had on that highway in Portage County? I can't count the number. However, what did the state of Wisconsin do? They went from a two lane to a four lane. And what happened? The accidents went down, fatalities went down. So if you, if you think that they're limiting, taking this four lane road on Division Street and turning it to a two or three, two and a half lane, you're going to, it's going to stop accidents, it's not going to do, it's going to increase them, and you're going to have more people killed.
Thank you. Supervisor Syke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've I've got a couple different angles on this. I live out in the town of Linwood, and I I shared this with Supervisor Martenson the other morning. We have to contend with the train out there. And there's been plenty of times in the last 20 years that I've gotten involved where there's been an emergency in Linwood, and emergency vehicles are either waiting at the train, or somebody coming in from Linwood trying to get into the city is waiting at the train, and there's an ambulance on the other side. This has happened numerous times. This has happened with the train. I know this resolution is talking about the road diet. This has also also happened with these, with the road diet on Clark Street. Okay? Now you get across the train tracks, and now you have one lane of traffic. You have one lane of traffic to contend with. My grandfather was the fireman in this community for 18 years, and he was the fire chief for 22 years. Station House Number Two went up off of Pat Street for the exact reasons we're talking about today, safety. Michigan wasn't always an underpass. Some of us are old enough to remember when that went through. The reason that underpass went through is because of the train. The reason Station House Number Two went in was because of the train and safety and response times. Excuse me. Out in front of the YMCA? That, when we were children, the road was so narrow, the YMCA had Christmas trees out in front of it for sale. We got the new ladder truck. It didn't fit in the station house. We had to re-revamp the station house for the new ladder truck to fit in, and we made that road wider so that ladder truck could make the turn. This is all about the safety of the people I represent. And for every county supervisor in this room, it should be about the safety of the people you represent in your rural area that have to get into Stevens Point to the hospital, that can't wait those seconds or minutes till somebody figures out whether, what their drivers at instructor told them. Do I go right? Do I go left? This resolution originally said censure. Censure the City of Stevens Point, and everybody got up in arms because they didn't understand what the word censure was. So we took the word censure out, and we put the definition of censure in its place. Strongly disagree with an anticipation of change. That's all it means. I want everyone in this room to think of the 2,800 people that they represent and their safety, not their safety driving up and down a two lane road, their safety at their homes out in the town of New Hope, out in the village of Nelsonville, town of Oak Plain, wherever you're coming from, whoever you represent, you have to get to that hospital. That ambulance has to get from that station house to where they're at. Foresight? 22 years as the chief, he understood where this community was going. Yes, I understand that the population of Stevens Point itself is decreasing, but our county is growing. Our people deserve to know that we're doing everything we can for them to get to them on their worst day. You talk to a firefighter in Stevens Point, you talk to EMS, you talk to first responders, our police officers, our sheriff's deputies, they meet meet people on their worst day. When they have to respond, that is that person's worst day. It's an emergency situation. This is about safety for everyone in the county, all 70,000, not the 25,000 living in Stevens Point. Supervisor Maresi has always said, the good of the whole. This is for everybody, not the people living inside the city limits, not the people living in the village of Plover, the 70,000 plus people that we here in this room represent. So however you want to look at it about driveways and and access and and how it looks on paper, I can put it on paper that if we reduced the speed limit to 20 miles an hour on every single road in the state, we will save lives, including the interstate. Who would disagree with that? If it was 20 miles an hour and you slip off the road on the interstate, your chances of surviving are close to 100%. It looks good on paper. It's not feasible. It's not feasible. Please, look at this. This is just asking the City of Stevens Point, for everyone we represent, to please take another look at this and look at changing your actions. I'm not disagreeing they didn't work hard. I'm not disagreeing they didn't spend a lot of money. I'm sure they did. What I'm saying is, I believe they got it wrong. I believe my grandfather's work of 40 years serving this community, I believe he would say, they got it wrong. I believe they got it wrong. I believe they work hard. I believe they spent a lot of money. I believe it looks good on paper, like we heard from our sheriff. But the reality is, it's not feasible. I expect a change. I expect them to take a look at this and listen to the people that have come up before them, the people that have come before us, the people we represent, the people, as Mr. Robbie pointed out this evening, that we serve, that we serve. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Dodge and Supervisor Eser.
I guess normally I wouldn't take a position, kind of critiquing what another municipality has done, but I guess, as I'm listening, this has been going on for quite a while, and we have not been aware of it. That's the way it is. But when we were looking for an area to cite the new justice center, seems to me that the city council discarded the out of downtown option very quickly, and they were aware of this road diet because it had been before them for action and review. So I guess my question is, in the interest of cooperation, is there any way to go back and reopen those discussions? The sheriff has a very strong opinion about not wanting to locate a new justice center downtown, that the road diet on 51 will impact their response. So I guess, you know, maybe we throw open some new discussion. That would be my hope, because I'm going to vote in favor of this resolution until I hear from somebody regarding the issue.
Supervisor Eser.
To follow up on what Supervisor Dodge said, and I guess this may be a question for a corp counsel or a county exec, do we have an appropriate venue for, for discussing this with the city? Or are we pass at? Has the city made a decision and we, as a county, cannot have input?
Discussing the the road diet?
Yes, discussing the decisions they've made on that corridor.
I think their council has already made their decisions. I'll let Dave speak on.
I can tell you, I haven't talked with their council about this. He hasn't approached me, I haven't approached him. You know, parties can talk about anything they want, whenever they want, but, you know, whether that's going to make a difference here, I have no clue. So I'm not much help on that tonight.
Yeah, my my question is more, is there, is there a mechanism where we can have input, or is there not a mechanism for the county to provide comment? In this case, because there's pretty compelling evidence that if we do cite something downtown, then we are looking at real safety concerns in moving those EMS vehicles around the county. And I'm just wondering, do we have the ability to comment, or do we not have the ability to comment?
Yes. I mean, we we can have conversations. I can, I can relay the sentiments of the discussion tonight to the to the city attorney, which I'm happy to do.
This this resolution has caused some discussion with myself and and some of the staff at the at the city, informally, but I think this resolution just itself is is, whether it's a springboard or not, you know, and I was scribbling down some notes, and I was waiting for my opportunity to speak, because I had people asking me, as the county board chair, why haven't I come out forward to say whether I was in favor or not? And the reason being was that, one of the first things I did as a county board chair is I made a mistake. We had a resolution on the university, they were changing their programs and stuff, and we had a resolution come forward, and I allowed it to be on the agenda. I should have never done that. Again, it was a bigger employer in Portage County, and we were telling them what we thought they should do. Same thing with municipalities. I felt at the at the beginning or the onset that Stevens Point, it's another municipality, we shouldn't be telling them what to do. But as we got farther and farther into this, just like the gentleman that spoke earlier about Dunkin' Donuts and 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 other things, that's a business owner, and as a business owner or CEO of a large company or a company, they have the right to say or voice their opinion. We, as the county, don't have a mechanism like that. There's, there's two people that are the CEOs to some point, and it's Executive Holman and myself. But neither one of us really feel that we have the authority to speak on our own or on behalf of the board. I know I don't because of the fact that the question was never laid before the board. I can't come out, that would be my opinion. But after this discussion, there will be an opinion of this very large employer that does business in Stevens Point. If we're not happy with something that's in the City of Stevens Point, this is where the county seat is. We can't go anywhere else. We have to stay in Stevens Point. As an employer that does business, and our customers are the people in Portage County that come to this building, that come into Stevens Point to pay their taxes or conduct business or whatever they need to do here, so they travel through Stevens Point. So for that reason, I I think we do have, at least, this resolution is another way of sending a letter that says, we are not in support of of what you're talking about. It would have been hard for us to come forward before they had made their decision, because we would have had to have a discussion about it so that one person could come and speak on behalf of the county board or what the county board felt. Short of a referendum question, and I believe last night they voted that they weren't going to have it, this is as close as you're going to get to represent the whole county or the majority of the people that use that street in the Stevens Point area. So, and I know, trust the experts and and what they what they have to say, but I know that the experts, and I always try and look for real life examples, and I can't help it, and if Nate's on here, you'll probably be shaking his head, but county highway R, it's 45 miles an hour coming from Plover going north on the two lane, that's a very narrow two lane with no shoulder, and then it widens to a four lane, and it goes to 35, and then it continues on through HH, and then it's 45 again. Nothing changes. It's just as wide as the other corridors, but it's 35 because that's the way they told me it was engineered. I don't get it. I don't, I can't for the life of me see the difference or understand how that's engineered any different. So that's just one example. And I know on some of these other things, and I know AECom, we do a lot of business with them at the county, and they're great guys to work with, but I don't know if they looked into the exemptions and stuff for the federal money, where they talk about older, narrower corridors and what that would look like, because you have to have the PED plan that goes in there as well, but to get that federal money. But I know they they realize it, and they come across it where there are corridors that are just like this, that are narrow, and what those exemptions, or if they looked at exemptions for that as well. All that this is saying is that we, Portage County, don't care for the three lane or the road diet and don't think that it's safe, so.
Is it possible or appropriate to have an informational presentation from the city? You know, again, a lot of this information is fairly new to me. My understanding is this discussion has been going on since 2012. Again, it's unfortunate the county wasn't brought in sooner because the county is obviously a major player.
Ray, I think, I think if this is going to change, it's going to change on their end, and it's not going to be something that 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 we will drive or initiate the change. I think a lot of people are just to the point where they're frustrated, and they're they're reaching out for as many things as they can. I'm sure there's other people other than Supervisor Johnson that are listening, and whether they're hearing things that they're hearing for the first time or stuff that they've heard for the last three or four years. But I think it's, it's ultimately, it's, it's going to be Stevens Point that's that's going to have to decide that, and whether it's people showing up at the meeting or other supervisors showing up at those meetings or how that's going to take place, but I want to try and convene or or direct that, so. Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a comment about this last, your your interaction with Supervisor Resers. He's asking for us to get more information so we can make an educated decision, and I think we all agree that the city and the county have not been very good at communicating. And then you're telling him that that would be nice, but there's no reason why we should have that conversation. So it's, I guess, what harm is there in having a discussion about this so we can actually, as a body, as a governmental body, have informed discussion? Because this resolution is empty. There's nothing here that that says anything about any evidence about the assertions that it makes. It has no teeth. It's, it's one of those resolutions that I thought we all talked about being a feel-good resolution and how we're not going to present them to the board. This, I just, I just wondered, why, why, why are you opposing a discussion with the city that Supervisor Reser is asking for? I think it's a good idea. The whole idea of this resolution being presented without city input and county discussion, city-county discussion, is is disrespectful to both, both municipalities. We're essentially telling the city what they have to do as the county, and that's not how this works. We need to have intergovernmental cooperation rather than, hey, we're going to tell you what we think you should do with your business. So how, how can we make this happen so we can actually? So how, how can we make this happen so we can actually have some discussion about it? Actually have a dialogue that's productive and can get us to a solution rather than just pointing the finger at the other? Thank you.
Supervisor Matcowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I hate to drag the evening on here any longer, but I was not able to attend the public safety meeting. I was at work at that time. The question I have for, I guess, the sheriff or anybody else that was at the public safety meeting is did anybody from the city attend that public safety meeting and speak on behalf of this resolution?
Nobody from the city was there.
Nobody from the city was there.
And it was properly noticed and everything? Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, I'm going to try not to belabor this because I, I know everyone's tired and probably hungry and maybe. To Supervisor Jakowski's comments, um, I, I had to work. So that's why I wasn't at that meeting. I can't speak for anybody else. So, um, yeah, I, I had a work commitment. For the council, which I preside over as president. Supervisor Dodge's comments, um, let's have that conversation. Speaking on behalf of the city council, not the city, city council. I think we'd, uh, love to revisit that conversation. I'm not saying what the outcomes will be, but unless we've, it's clear, we have a breakdown in communication. Let's figure out a way to fix that. Thanks.
They, I think it's pretty clear they want more input from the city and also maybe for the city to relook at this. My question would be, do we get that, do we get to that goal faster by putting a resolution forward? Or do we get to that goal by saying, hey, let's meet and talk about this and express our concerns and our desire for you to relook at this? I'd rather have us sitting down with them than simply giving them a resolution because I think that closes off communication and the process rather than trying to be more proactive and working with them on it.
So if this body doesn't have the discussion whether they're in favor or not in favor of it, if we're in favor of it, that's the direction we're going. There's no reason to talk to them.
It's just real hard to say that we strongly disagree when we have just a, a sliver of information at this point. And nobody from the other part, you know, because we're talking about safety, everybody here, I would think, cares about the people in the community and about safety. Some people believe that a road diet is safety, is safer. Other people believe that it's going to cause slowdowns and issues. I don't know what the answer is, but we should probably be talking about that. But to say that we strongly disagree at this point, I'm not there. I, I don't have enough information.
Anybody else? No further comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. And the clerk will call a roll.
Matt Jakowski.
Aye.
Gifford.
Gifford.
Robbie.
No.
Maresi.
No.
Barry Jakowski.
Aye.
Neville.
No.
Morrow.
No.
Zastro.
No.
No. Johnson.
No.
Pataki.
Aye.
Madine.
No.
Hano.
No.
Reeser.
No.
Dubek.
No.
Haga.
Aye.
Martinson.
No.
Lattick.
Aye.
Rickowsky.
Aye.
Jankowski.
Aye.
Gussel.
Aye.
Splinter.
Aye.
Soik.
Aye.
Dodge.
Aye.
Eleven for, twelve against, one excused, one vacant, uh, motion failed.
Number 21, authorizing inmate housing service contract renewal with Wapaka County for fiscal year 2022 through 2024.
Resolution number 177 2020-2022, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution approves a contract renewal with Wapaka County for inmate housing for the years 2022 through 2024.
Motion by Supervisor Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Martinson. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Excre- expressing, uh, appreciation for those employees who retired from Portage County or who passed away while in the employment of Portage County in 2021.
Resolution number 178 2020-2022, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution, the employees who retired or passed away in 2021.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 23, authorize, authorization for 2022 contracts over a hundred thousand for the Health and Human Service Department.
Resolution number 179 2020-2022, submitted by the Health and Human Services Board. This resolution authorizes contracted services over a hundred thousand for the Health and Human Services Department for 2022.
Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. David Iden, is he in here yet?
There he is.
Thank you, Chairman Haga. Uh, maybe out of line here, I just want to, I see this, uh, I suspect this is in regards to contracts you commonly renew and, and cover. I know it comes to mind with, uh, the trillion dollar budgets we seem to have at the federal level and the COVID money that was put in place. Is there any conflict between a hundred thousand dollars for contracts? As opposed to the money that's been put out there for communities for, for COVID response? And I would imagine that goes to the states and then the states distribute that to the counties and localities in particular. I was just curious as, as to the, bit of the breakdown on that. Thank you. And by the way, Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas, Dave.
There, just for a point of clarification, that there, it's, it's not uncommon for us to have a department where it has contracts over a hundred thousand. But this one was going to, uh, the Boys and Girls Club was a contract that we have. Uh, United Way, we have a contract with them that's over a hundred thousand. And, uh, CISA five, uh, physical therapy and occupational therapy, we have a contract. There's only three items, so, so, okay? Thank you. Uh, the next one is, uh, and I can't, I don't know if I'm reading this right, Alexander.
We got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I have, I have, uh, public, public input.
Another person to speak.
I have another person from the public to speak. And, uh, is it Ali, is, can you state that again? Is it Alexander or?
Yeah, it's Alexander.
Okay.
All right, um, all right, just, I wrote notes down real quick. All right. So I don't believe that you should be approving any contracts for the Hu- Health and Human Services Department. I'm going to give you a couple of reasons why. One, mainly because it's an unconstitutional department in itself. Uh, there is no real accountability to the people when it comes to this department. So you can't find anywhere in the constitution where it states that we should have a department not accountable to the people. Secondly, the county HHS has been breaking citizens' constitutional rights. For this county alone, sometimes they go into other counties and break another citizen's constitutional rights. So for them to have more money, I mean, that's, that's just giving lawlessness to another lawless, uh, department. I mean, the government needs to stay out of people's lives. That's pretty much what we have a sheriff's department for. If, if somebody's abusing their kids, they should call the sheriff's department and they should deal with that because they are elected. At least I know the sheriff is. So, I mean, therefore I personally don't agree with any money going to these departments federally, state, county, even city. It doesn't really matter. It's one of the main reasons why our country's in so much debt. The gentleman before me said trillions of dollars are going to the Health and Human Services Department. Trillions for an unconstitutional department. I would say, don't approve these contracts because first of all, the Boys and Girls Club is extremely liberal in perverting our children. That's just, that's just goes off of what the scripture says. And, um, yeah, he who justifies the wicked and who, he who condemns the just, even both of them are hateful to Yahweh. So that's straight from his word. Just kind of want to throw it out there. It's an unconstitutional department and no money should be allocated to them at all. Okay. Thank you. Uh, is it Darlene? What's that? Darwin? Okay.
He's the last one then, right? No, those were for the 20. So there you can have this.
Hi there. Can you hear me properly?
Yep.
I would like, I'd also like to recommend that PC, PC HHS be defunded until their ongoing unconstitutional actions are investigated and brought to a halt. That would include defunding all PC HHS contracts until their operations are brought into compliance with their own internal policies, state and local laws, and federal law in the US Constitution. For example, PC HHS is currently intervening into the affairs of children and families due to PC HHS's dislike of various families' religious and homeschooling practices. That is social engineering. That is not the intended purpose of HHS. Throughout Europe during World War II, there was an organization called Das Gesundheitshamt, which means the Health Department. Das Gesundheitshamt also took children from families in order to indoctrinate them into their worldview. We do not want such activity in our community. We definitely do not want taxpayer dollars funding such activities. Again, please halt all funding to Portage County HHS until their actions are brought into compliance with the law. For the sake of our community and our children and our families, I recommend the creation of an elected oversight committee to rein in PC HHS's ongoing misconduct since the current system is clearly not working. It is an abomination for authorities to commit wickedness, but they are established by righteousness. The wisest man who ever lived, Shlomo Solomon, said that in Proverbs 16:2. Thank you.
That's the last of our public comment. Uh, anyone from the public? Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, uh, since we did hear from the folks at the, um, Health and Human Services Committee meeting, with over half an hour of commentary, finally ended by some very diplomatic sheriffs, uh, who escorted the folks out of the room. I would like to say that, you know, you don't win the argument by walking into a meeting and dropping the word constitutional or unconstitutional, nor does the word liberty win it for you, nor does freedom. You have to, uh, conduct yourself according to the modes of modern communication, you know, which is argument, discussion, dialect, dialogue, I should say, um. And, you know, just dropping the word unconstitutional doesn't make you right, right? Okay, the, the constitution was written at the end of the 18th century, okay? We now live in the 21st century and the most hyper-complex civilization ever devised on the planet, okay? So trying to apply, uh, words from the 18th century as if, you know, you can map them one-to-one on today, that's ridiculous. And so, and we've been hearing for almost two years now from the same organized faction in the community who think that because, you know, they've got a tight crew, that they're automatically right on every issue, you know? And this is just not the way it's going to work. We live in a society, not a random collection of individuals. And if you live in a society, you have to work by the rules of the society. And we have social problems and public health problems. They're not individual health problems, they're public health problems. That's why we have a public health department and social services. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the Health and Human Services Department, uh, for all the hard work they do and the committee members. Know that you have very broad shoulders, as you've proven for the past two years. Uh, and nobody deserves what, that, that, that kind of abuse that you, uh, have been receiving. So please, Director Shabowski, if you would, tell your staff how amazing they are. Because we, we care about you.
Appreciate it.
I, I want everyone to realize too, this is Ray's last meeting. And he's, he's going to be the youngest guy retiring from Portage County. He's 45. I'll tell you, Ray is the one guy that I always said is wrestling with a tornado every day. So I, I will, I will miss Ray. I will miss his, uh, his, uh, personality. And, uh, I'm sure, uh, there's a lot of people here that are going to miss Ray as well. I didn't realize today was his, was, I would have brought a cupcake or something for him. I don't know what, but.
I tried that.
I would have tried it, but all that he would have gotten was the wrapper. But I, I wanted to let everybody know too, though, that it is Ray's last meeting and, uh, uh, he's, uh, uh, going to be missed. I know I'll miss him. So, uh, thanks, Ray. Thanks for all you've done and, uh, your leadership and, uh, and trying to right that ship. And, uh, uh, good luck and good health, my friend. So. All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, to authorize, uh, contracts over a hundred thousand dollars for Health and Human Services. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 24, authorizing a budget, uh, authorizing a 2021 budget adjustment for Portage County Health Insurance Fund.
Resolution number 180 2020-2022, submitted by the Health and Human Services and Finance Committees. This resolution authorizes a budget adjustment for the Health Insurance Fund. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Larry Rakowski. Don't be shy, folks. Uh, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppo- opposed. Motion carries. Number 25, authorizing a 2021 budget adjustment to the self-funded Workers' Comp Fund.
Resolution number 181 2020-2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes a budget adjustment for the Workers' Compensation Fund and requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Robbie, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye? Aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 26. Confirming Supervisor District 14 will be left vacant for the remainder of the 2020-2022 term.
Resolution number 182 2020-2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution confirms county supervisory district 14 will be left vacant for the remainder of the term.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 27, confirming the appointment of Heather Schultz to as Portage County Medical Examiner.
Resolution number 183 2020-2022, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution confirms Heather Schultz's appointment as the Chief Medical Examiner.
Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
Just to comment, uh, I was in the Citizens Academy with Heather and there is, if I ever have to have my death investigated, I would want her doing it. She is just absolutely incredible person. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Last page, folks. Confirming the appointment of Timothy Reed as Portage County Planning and Zoning Director.
Resolution number 184 2020-2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution confirms Timothy Reed as the Planning and Zoning Director.
Motion by Reeser, seconded by Gussel. Discussion. Motion by Reeser, seconded by Gussel. Discussion. And Timothy's here tonight. This is Timothy up in the front, Timothy Reed, County Board. County Board, Timothy Reed.
Pleased to meet you.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Uh, number twenty-nine, resolution approving and authorizing the Aging and Disability Resource Center to enter into a service contract with the City of Stevens Point Central Transit Office for the provision of rides for seniors and adults with disabilities.
Resolution number one eighty-five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Commission on Aging and Aging and Disability Resource Board. This resolution approves a contract with the City of Stevens Point for rides for seniors and adults with disabilities.
Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, the, the way that Central Transport and, uh, the ADRC work together is, is in my mind, a real good example of what I called intergovernmental cooperation earlier. Um, the City of Stevens Point having taken over the transportation, uh, provision does the best job that it can with the limited resources available in, uh, providing mobility for our elder folks and disabled people. And I would say that mobility for the elderly and disabled as well as low-income people is a real harm, is a real marker for, uh, quality of life. So kudos to the, uh, work of Central Transport and the Transportation Coordinating Committee.
Thank you. There's no further discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirty. Revision to Portage County Ordinance three point one one. County Human Resources Policy three point one one point nine point six holidays.
Resolution number one eighty-six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution amends the code of ordinances to include sheriff's office communication technicians and corrections officers in the same holiday schedule as all other employees.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi. Seconded by Supervisor Reeser. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirty-one. Authorizing Portage County to enter into a settlement agreement over opioids.
Yeah, I didn't read that whole thing.
You heard it. As stated. Motion by Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor Murrow. Discussion. Oh, and we, I, uh, let me, we've got a Scrivener's error in here as well. So go ahead, Kayla.
Um, just was going to mention that there is a Scrivener's error that we need to change, um, in the first paragraph of the resolution title. And on the second page in the first where it has clause the Janson Pharmaceuticals is spelled wrong, so we will make that correction.
It was spelt wrong in the document at the beginning.
It's just the spelling of the company's name is all, so.
So. Well, we will take them, if there's no objections, I'll just take a voice vote on this. So I don't need a motion or a second, but just to make those corrections.
Unanimous consent.
Just, I'm, I'm going to call for it anyway.
Yeah.
So all of those in favor of that, uh, spelling correction, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's unanimous consent. Back to the original resolution as printed and stated. Is there any other discussion? Everybody in the state of Wisconsin has to pass this resolution and everybody is on track to do that. Dave's been on quite a few calls. Uh, Wisconsin Counties Association and the attorneys have all been working together to make sure we can get this out and we can get this done. So everybody has to get it done. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn. Wow. Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Gussel. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.